Before we begin this evening, I want to ask for a moment of silence. Des Moines Public Schools on Sunday lost a champion of public education, somebody that fought and fought and fought for all of our youth. And in honor of Teri Colwell-Johnson, I would like us to have a moment of silence for 18 seconds, which represents her 18 years of service. So please bow your heads. Thank you so much. Thank you for honoring Teri this evening. I'd like to call the school board meeting for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024, for Des Moines Public Schools to order. Ms. Rios, would you please take the role?
Yes, Ms. Alonso Diaz? Here. Ms. Campos?
Present.
Mr. Dix?
Here.
Ms. Knox?
Here.
Ms. Martorano?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
We have four.
The first item of business is approval of the agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion and amend the agenda by moving Consent Item E6 to Other for individual consideration. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Dix, so moved.
Knox?
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Knox. Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved 6-0. Next on our agenda is District Recognitions. Superintendent Roberts, would you please present?
Certainly. Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. At each board meeting, we continue to bring forward recognitions at school board meetings, celebrating the successes and accomplishments of our students and staff, both in and out of the classroom, for just outstanding achievements. They truly represent Des Moines Public Schools in an exemplary manner. This evening, I am pleased to share with you a few recognitions. First, it may be that we need to probably consider having a little bit of a nickname for our city and maybe sometimes calling it Debate instead of Des Moines. Thank you all for indulging in all the humor. And that is not only because our community is hosting the National Speech and Debate Tournament for the next two years in a row, with this year's tournament scheduled to be held on June 16th through the 21st. But it is because Des Moines Public Schools is home to some of the top high school forensics programs in all of Iowa and across the nation. First, allow me to give a special shout out to someone who cannot be with us this evening, Samuel Jewell. He is a dynamic teacher at East High School as well as a Scarlet's debate coach. But more than that, Sam had to attend classes at Drake University this evening, so he couldn't be here, but he's here in spirit with us, being here that we are ground zero for school debate in the state of Iowa. I want us to extend our congratulations, not only to him for being a dynamic coach, but on his selection amongst hundreds of teachers in the state of Iowa. He was named as the Coach of the Year by the Iowa Forensics League. Yes, let's give him some love. In his three years as coach, Sam went from having no returning members on the team to now having 15 students regularly competing at competitions and tournaments throughout the state and beyond. Those students have enjoyed tremendous success ranging from state runner-up finishes to national qualifiers. Well done, Sam. And now, ladies and gentlemen, you're wondering why we are ground zero for speech and debate. It's an honor to have with us the top forensics team in the state of Iowa. Yes, state champions, Riden Nation, Roosevelt High School. At the recent Iowa Forensic League State Championship, Roosevelt had multiple students who earned top finishes, including several state champions in 10 different categories. Roosevelt won the overall debate sweepstakes and finished second in speech sweepstakes, given them a combined score that placed them as the top team in Iowa. As if that wasn't enough, Senior Charlie Tim was named Student of the Year by the Iowa Forensics League. I'd like to invite Principal Steve Shapaw and this outstanding, dynamic, and well-represented team to please come forward to share a little bit about your experience. And while they come forward, I also want to take special note that Principal Shapaw has been a longtime advocate for speech and debate and a key leader in the work that has now landed us as the host city for the National Speech and Debate Tournament. Roosevelt team, Principal Shapaw, please come forward to the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts and the board, for this outstanding recognition of our speech and debate team. Our head coach is Parker Klein. It's his second year as a teacher and coach here at Roosevelt High School. He's done remarkable work with these amazing students. And not only are we the best team in the state, beating the private schools, the public schools, the suburban schools, but you would all be incredibly proud of how this team conducts themselves. As Dr. Roberts said, I have a history in speech and debate, so I've actually traveled with members of the team to Minneapolis for competition. I've attended portions of tournaments in the metro area and the camaraderie that they have with one another, the way they lift each other up when maybe they don't do as well as they wanted to do individually, but their teammates do well. The spirit and the community certainly represents excellence through unity, equity, and integrity, which is what Roosevelt's about, but also models what we want to be as a school district. So thank you for this wonderful recognition. Mr. Klein and his students are the reason that we're standing here tonight and am so proud of them and the tremendous work they do all the time and super thrilled that so many of them will be competing at Nationals this summer here in Des Moines. And those who aren't will be helping us because we need a lot of volunteers. So it'll be a true team effort across Des Moines Public Schools. Mr. Klein, did you want to say anything?
This is kind of impromptu, but impromptu speaking is one of the events that we do. So hopefully I can do it. I just wanted to say that I'm super proud of all of these students. They work just preposterously hard on this throughout the entire season. We are, as I understand it, I think we're the only speech and debate program that actually practices every single day after school, except for Fridays. But just the amount of immense dedication and time that people spend on this can't be understated. And I also am very proud to be the nominee for Sam Jewell, winning Iowa Forensic League Coach of the Year. What he does with the East High program is outstanding, and I'm lucky to have him as a colleague. So DMPS Speech and Debate is the place to be.
Thank you.
We just feel so compelled that we would love to hear from at least just one youth about their speech and debate experience, just one.
I would. I would.
All right.
Okay, my name is Nani Sa Baka, and I am the Speech and Debate State Pros Champion. Yes, yes, yes. Okay. So I'm not gonna lie, guys, last year I thought all speech and debate people were weird. But this year, my perspective has completely changed. And the reason why I love doing speech and debate so much is because speech and debate has really helped me learn the power of my voice. Not only has speech and debate taught me advocacy skills and public speaking, speech and debate taught me how to love my personality. Because my info is about this pan and this chemical called Pyfas, but it's really, it's my personality that carries the speech. And through speech and debate, I've learned that my personality has worth and value. So I'm really grateful for that. I'm so grateful for my team, too. Okay.
Side note, Nani's is actually the future superintendent of the Des Moines Public Schools. She and I have had a lot of conversations. She plans to shadow me one day. We've had some scheduled conflicts. We'll make it happen. I promise we'll make that happen. This evening, ladies and gentlemen, I also want to bring to you what an honor it is to recognize some future teachers in our midst. Our friends and partners in this mission, critical work of recruiting and retaining effective teachers, the Des Moines Education Association, are here to present six students with what is called the Future Educator Scholarship to help them in their journey to higher education. Each student has identified as a person of color, so because of this, I certainly want to commend our friends at the DMEA for helping in the important work of bringing greater diversity and representation to the ranks of educators. At this time, I would like to call in DMEA representatives Jill and Josh. If you please come forward to the podium to introduce your scholarship recipients and allow all of us to congratulate them as we start to recruit them this early to become Des Moines Public Schools teachers.
Yeah, my name is Joshua Brown. I'm the president of the Des Moines Education Association, the union that represents our teachers and other education support professionals in the Des Moines Public School District. And we are super excited to be here to present some of these scholarships. We've been presenting scholarships to future educators in Des Moines Public Schools for years. But to bring it out to the light and not just do it internally, but to be able to do this in the public aligns with one of our guardrails and with our goals and values as Des Moines Public Schools. And we wanted to make sure that these students got the recognition they deserve, not just from the educators of Des Moines Public Schools, but from all of us. So I'm going to turn it over to Jill Dykstra, who organizes and coordinates our Dream to Teach program, to talk a little bit about each one of these students.
Good evening. I'm Jill Dykstra. I am the coordinator for Dream to Teach here in Des Moines Public Schools. So Dream to Teach is a program that actively recruits high school students to become teachers. We have all five high schools represented in our classes, and I've had such a great pleasure and an honor to get to know all these guys. So I want to introduce them one at a time, and then they're going to receive their scholarship. The first one is Eliza Mantende. So Eliza is a senior at Roosevelt, and next fall she is going to be attending Grand View. Brice Hernandez. Brice is a senior at East. She will also be attending Grand View in the fall, and she is a part of our TPA program. So that's Teacher Pair Registered Apprentice. And they'll be, all of the kids that are in that program will also be doing a signing later in May, and they will start working and going through college at the same time. The next student is Nayjoke Malua. Nayjoke is also a senior at Roosevelt. She's going to be attending D-Mac in the fall, and she is also one of our T-PRA students. Our next student is Yadira Carrillo Ramirez. Yadira is a senior at Roosevelt, and she will be attending D-Mac in the fall, and I believe she is also signing up for the TRPA program. Naomi Nimbona is... Naomi is a senior at East. She will be attending UNI in the fall, and she is also a T-PRA student. And last but not least, Curtis Badio is a senior at Roosevelt. So he's a senior at Roosevelt, and they're going to be attending Drake in the fall, and they are also a T-PRA student.
Thank you for choosing education.
Yeah, so we're just so proud of these educators. They each wrote an essay explaining why they wanted to be teachers, and we were just blown away. We typically give out two of these scholarships a year, and it was just impossible not to give out six. So we were super excited that we have six future educators. Hopefully they all come back to Des Moines and be part of our system. And we're excited that they're here and they all came and that they're able to use this scholarship for whatever they need to use it for to be able to support their education moving forward. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, future educators, Josh, Jill, and our friends at the DMA. Ladies and gentlemen, if you haven't already, listen to the latest edition of the podcast that is fastly becoming the best educational podcast in the land, the Become Here Project, our DMPS podcast. Be sure to download it for great interviews with your DMPS teammates and students. The most recent interview talked about chronic absenteeism and our commitment as a school district and board to address this national issue. Madam Chair, that concludes this evening's board district recognitions.
Thank you. That's wonderful. The next item on our agenda is our monitoring report, Goal 3. I will turn it over to Ms. Alonso to facilitate the board discussion of the monitoring report.
Thank you. We are going to be monitoring or having our conversation regarding Goal 3 and interim Goal 3A. First, we have to make sure that certain components for components are part of the report, which are things that we look for before monitoring and before moving forward. One, we have to make sure, board, that it clearly shows, so if you look at your report, what is being monitored, the specific goal and the interim goal. And I have to go back because I was supposed to read the goal and the interim goal, and I didn't read those for you. So I will go ahead and do that. Goal 3, the percent of black male 11th grade students proficient on the ISAS Mathematics Assessment will increase from 17.7% in June 2022 to 45% in June 2026. Our interim goal, 3A, is the percentage of grade 6 through 8 black male students meeting benchmark on the FastBridge math screener will increase from 15.7% in June 2023 to 45% in June 2026. Going back to the components that we must see in the report before we move forward are, we have to make sure that it clearly shows what's being monitored, the specific goal and the interim goal. Do we agree that we have that?
Yes.
Yes.
It shows data for the three previous reporting periods, the current reporting period, and the target reporting periods, annual targets and the deadline target. Do we have that?
Yes.
It shows the superintendent's evaluation of performance via our assessment screener, so the FastBridge math for interim goal, and our ISAS mathematics assessment for Goal 3. Do we have that?
Yes.
And it shows supporting documentation that evidences the superintendent's evaluation via the tables provided. It also indicates the next steps. Do we have that?
Yes.
Yes.
With all those things in order, we are ready to have our conversation on the progress of these goals. The first part of the conversation to discuss is the data itself, with the latter part of the conversation being more forward focused. We'll begin with any questions that fall into the who, what, and why categories of inquiry first, for the purpose of understanding the current reality of our students as compared to the vision that we have described in this goal.
Dr. Roberts, under, may I, Madam Vice Chair? On page one, you identified that the percentage of black male students meeting the benchmark on the math screener is at 16%, and this is a drop from 21%. What do you attribute this drop to?
Thank you, Board Member Martorano. So there are a number of factors that we have looked at, and certainly one, while we have looked at and celebrated a winter-to-winter increase, the sort of interim goal around looking at the drop for 6th through 8th grade, we have seen in terms of our trend data, it dip when students move from grades 5 to 6. And we are attributing this to just multiple areas. And certainly while we are acknowledging these areas, we will see later on in, when we're looking at what we have to do in terms of next steps, what we're doing to address it. So one, we've certainly seen students, because of their exposure to a very different instructional model, right, how students are exposed to instructional delivery in grades pre-K through 5 is somewhat different from when they move into grade 6. Case in point, we've looked at the data, and what the data tells us is, we've also seen some attendance challenges, if you may, with students as they transition into 6th grade. We have also looked at, particularly for black males, this score that tells us about their sense of belonging when they get to the 6th grade, and that number is one that certainly requires us to do a lot more work around making sure that they feel that sense of belonging. Additionally, as we think about our tennis or competencies around, the five tennis or competencies around socio-emotional learning, specifically in terms of self-regulation, good decision-making, and building solid relationships, we know that those are areas of growth for students who are transitioning. Additionally, and I'll revisit this when we get to what are next steps, I think there is an inclination for us to also attribute some of the drop to the fact that we do not yet have as robust of a program when we think about vertical alignment. And vertical alignment essentially is looking at how you essentially create a space for professional development, for conversations that are collegial and collaborative between two different grade level bands. And in this case, what we are thinking about is how can we strengthen our approach to vertical alignment and theme in between teachers who are in grades 5 and 6? And what that allows us to do is, it allows us to sort of create a space for conversations where teachers who are teaching 5th grade students have a good sense of what students should know and be able to do when they get to 6th grade. Additionally, it allows teachers who are in 6th grade to get a better understanding of what students are exposed to, what they're learning when they're in the 5th grade, to prepare for them to come up to the 6th.
If I may just ask a follow-up question on that. I'm trying to look at the data and see how I would understand the comment you made about grades 5 to 6. So I understand between 5 and 6, there's a difference in teaching style, but how would that be reflected in the data? Is it my asking the question, I think, the way I'm trying to, which is, I think what you're saying is, kids, obviously their curriculum and the pedagogy and the teaching style gets interrupted when you go from 5 to 6. How is that, how would that be reflected in the data or the data drop? And maybe that's not what you were inferring.
So we've seen the dip. Is the question, how, so what are we attributing, the drop from grades 5 to 6?
Yeah, but where would you see that? Because you wouldn't see it, this isn't FastBridge, isn't this a 6 through 8 screener? So how do you know that it's happening?
So 6th grade students, so we're talking about 6th grade students specifically?
Okay.
Right, yeah.
So did you know what their scores were in 5th grade to then compare to 6th grade?
Yes, you should be, yep, we have access to students' performance in 5th grade.
To FastBridge?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions?
Dr. Roberts, how, if at all, would you relate our results and outcomes in literacy to our outcomes in math and the data that you're showing us? Would you at all, is that one of the factors in all of the data that we're seeing here?
Not specifically in this data, but generally speaking, when we think about a relationship between literacy and math, what we have seen across the board is, students tend to have some struggles with word problems, and word problems make up relatively significant amount of assessments. So literacy, again, finds itself interwoven in every single content area in the district.
Yep, thank you.
Follow-up question to the dip that Ms. Martorano referred to. Dr. Roberts, can you, in the report, it says that for the last two years at least, we've experienced a dip from fall to winter. To what do you attribute that seemingly consistent decline in achievement to from fall to winter for our specifically 6th through 8th grade black male students in math?
Yeah, it's between 56?
No.
Repeat the question.
No, from fall to winter for the last two years, there's been a dip. So our fall assessment, like this year, we came in, our fall assessment said 21.1 were meeting benchmark of our 6th through 8th grade black males, and then we saw a decline in winter to 16% of 6th through 8th grade black males were meeting the benchmark. And the same the year prior, from 22 to 23, there was a dip from fall to winter. I'm interested, why, why do you, to what do you attribute that dip in achievement to?
Yeah, absolutely. And there are myriad of factors, right, some of which I referenced earlier, and that is specifically for black males, as you asked, Ms. Knox, is making sure that we are providing the kind of instructional delivery model that truly acknowledges the lived experiences of black males. You know, we know that while we have not had a focus with intentionality in previous years, we are beginning to do that now with a gleam framework. And so again, black males are, to some extent, when they're showing up in schools and they are receiving really sound instruction, we are finding that there are gaps in terms of how we are truly engaging them in terms of our pedagogical delivery model, right? It's not as culturally responsive as it should be. Additionally, you know, we've looked at data that really highlights a concerning amount of chronic absenteeism for students across the board in 6-8, but certainly for black males as well. So I think we've seen chronic absenteeism for the all-student group, black male 6-8, at about 42%. And for all students, we've seen that number at about 45% or the other way around. So again, attendance in school is also a concern of ours.
Can I ask just a follow-up question? And Maria slapped my hand if I'm not supposed to ask this, but I totally understand a decline if I was an incoming 6th grader, an engagement from my fall score, you know, down to winter, maybe I'm trying to figure it out, it's not feeling right, I understand that. I'm wondering if you see the same dip, though, for 7th and 8th graders who now sort of know what to expect in middle school math? Do we, is that dip from fall to winter across the board for all grade levels?
I do not have that data in front of me, but again, it's something I'm happy to bring back to the board.
Right, that's an average of 6 through 8, so I didn't know if we see a big dip in 6, and maybe not as big in 7th and 8th. I was just kind of curious how much the 5th to 6th grade transition plays into that dip, or if that is sort of across the board, our students are just disengaged from fall to winter across the board.
Excellent question. And how it predicts whether or not we'll see the same trend around the dip, something we'll definitely look into and happy to get that back to the board.
Dr. Roberts, can you quickly, you talked about when black males are not receiving culturally responsive pedagogy. What would be an example of an intervention? So when that's, when they're not receiving education that they're connecting with, how, what's happening, right? So what's the intervention that's happening to course correct that?
Yeah, so it's a multi-level or multi-tiered approach to provide interventions, right? Interventions will will result based on the observations that a teacher or teachers, coaches, and school leaders are making, as well as not just in terms of observations of students in classroom, but certainly looking at the data that surrounds a particular student's performance. And so, a concrete example that I would give is if a teacher teaches a particular unit, gives an assessment to test students' understanding or mastery of that unit, when the teacher looks at student performance as demonstrated through the assessment, then a solid teacher, which we have, you know, hundreds of them in our schools, would go back and look at where are the gaps, right? Where were their missed opportunities for learning? And then the teacher will likely engage either in conversations with peers or even with support from their coaches or leaders to look at what we call a reteaching approach.
Got it, thank you.
And if reteaching doesn't work in a differentiated way, then we can look at what additional interventions may benefit or support our student.
Thank you.
Dr. Roberts, with regards to the transition, of course, all of our students go through this transition. So what do you attribute the transition? Why is the transition more difficult for our black males than it is for our other students? And how are you attributing? I guess, help me, help me understand why if this fifth-to-sixth grade transition is so difficult, in particular for our black males?
You know, we are looking at data that includes, again, the data that speaks to sense of belonging, right? What we have found is the sense of belonging for black males in our middle schools is significantly low. And so, you know, again, while we recognize and acknowledge that this data has to get better, I know that there are a number of actions that we are taking across each level superintendent's office in partnership with actually the DMEA and our middle school leaders. We are looking at creating some consistent structures, practices, and protocols that would create safe spaces, that would create spaces of improved educational opportunities for our students. I think ultimately, we have to make sure that we are truly investing in the kind of pedagogical models that focuses on providing students with a firm and instruction that provides them with engaging instruction. You know, we want to make sure that we are not perpetuating some of the same practices that we've had for many years, and that is a one-size-fits-all, without acknowledging that our education system has essentially failed historically marginalized groups for a very long time, because there was not that intentionality. More specifically, we have failed black students, and even more granularly, we failed black males for a very long time, for a number of reasons. One of those reasons that we have not necessarily acknowledged in this report and are talking about is bias in educators, and educators across the board, including teachers, school, and district leaders, right? Our biases sometimes allows us to think about, perceive, and look at black males in a certain manner, and those biases sometimes tend to get in the way. What we've seen in the Mont public schools is there's a lot of intentionality whereby their conversations happening, right? We have some robust professional learning communities where there is a willingness of the adults who are in this school system to recognize where those bias exists and try to work in those so that we can truly meet the needs of students. It's more than just the technical approach of a teacher who's highly qualified delivering on strong pedagogy based on their content expertise, right? We have to really look at the adaptive challenges that we're sitting with, right? And that is, what are the relationships that we are building? How are we encouraging and investing, encouraging students to be present? And how are we investing in their abilities or their potential as opposed to only making decisions and judgments based on their current performance? So the work is so much deeper than just the technical aspects that we tend to look at with quantifiable data.
And you mentioned those biases. And on page two, under what's not going well, you, I believe, are highlighting where in the data that bias comes into play, particularly in the expulsions that our black males are receiving. So can you help me understand what is currently happening that our black males are being deferred or being put into suspensions and expulsions at a higher rate than our other males?
I don't necessarily see where that data acknowledges that the black males are being suspended at higher rates, right? At 21%?
Compared to 62% of males.
Compared to 62%. But again, even if it's 1% of black males being suspended, we've talked about the fact that and acknowledged that they are historically marginalized. And so this is something that is top of mind for us. So what are we doing? Our response certainly is multileared, right? One, we have invested in a number of different partnerships with community partners to make sure that while we have to have a response to student discipline challenges, we have a continuum of supports that we're providing to students and providing for students, especially black students, right? Specifically, as we speak about what is happening at the middle schools, we currently have a number of students who are with one of our partners, Urban Dreams, where while they are students who are, and I'm using the word, who are victims of an out-of-school suspension, they're still receiving continuity of instruction, some coaching, some socio-emotional supports. We've also partnered with our, another community partner, and less talk, and they're facilitating a lot of restorative conversations. I want to make sure that we are also acknowledging that as we think about out-of-school suspension rates for black males, we've seen not only in the Mont public schools, but nationally, there is a lot of disproportionality with how we're suspending black males and black females, specifically black males, right? The data tells us from, I think, the National Center of Education Statistics that for every five African-American students who are suspended, we only suspend about 2.5 or three white students. And what we have found, when we dig a little deeper, it's not that black males have the propensity to have more infractions, but sometimes so much more goes into how we are responding to discipline. But I commend our teachers, our student support services team, and our leaders for how we are responding, right? While we have this 21% of black males who are being suspended, our commitment is to get better, right, to make sure that we are not punishing them because of sometimes what are considered to be age-appropriate or developmental behaviors.
Thank you for the adjustment in the language. I did say at a higher rate and disproportionate rate is what I, the language I should have chosen. So thank you for that.
Dr. Roberts?
You go.
On page two, under what's not going well, you, the last bullet point, you mentioned the variance in schools' use of the GLEAM monitoring tool for data collection. What do you, what are the factors that are negatively impacting that variance? And what strategies do you have in place to address that?
Thank you, Ms. Alonso Diaz. And so, GLEAM is certainly the framework where we, in which we are investing a significant, significant resources, right? Time, certainly financial resources. But I want certainly the board and community to recognize that while we have a number of points of celebration thus far, GLEAM is in its infancy. We are only about nine, eight or nine months into the GLEAM implementation. And so the variance we're seeing is based on, one, time in our schedule, right? The one thing that I can say with utmost confidence is there is not a single principal in the Mont public schools, certainly in our middle schools, that does not see the value in or has not invested in GLEAM. And so the variance is essentially based on factors that includes time, because there is some, again, variation with schedules based on what is happening in each building, and just the rate at which we are, you know, implementing this new and significant initiative.
Thank you.
Dr. Roberts, real quick. So what was doing, what is going well on here was percentage of black students with IEPs main target or growth. What specific interventions are in place with those students versus black males that are not meeting benchmarks? Is there anything that's helping them out that we know?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Campos. And so, yeah, this is certainly one of our points of pride and celebration, right? When we can get to this place where some of our most vulnerable students are marginalized, students with IEPs are demonstrating growth. One, we have made a conscious switch to norm and research-based, specifically designed instruction. Two, there is much more of a commitment to maintain fidelity to the implementation of a student's IEP, right? So again, making sure that we are working with providing support to teachers and providing support to them so that they are designing instruction that is truly targeted and differentiated to meet the specific goals of students who have IEPs. Additionally, we are seeing, we have a lot of supports coming from our AEA partners, particularly in terms of special education, and they're supporting some of the work that we are doing. You know, students with IEPs, 15% of our students across the district are students with IEPs. And so I know that by having that very goals-based and database sort of resource where we have to follow that, not only because we need to be in compliance with PL 94142, but because we recognize that these are students who have a special need, and it's incumbent upon us to make sure that there's a commitment on our part to meet that need. The last thing that I'll say that we will attribute to this growth is oftentimes in the space of special education, there is this duality of either focusing on compliance or focusing on instruction. While as a district, we have seen really strong practices around focusing on compliance, we are also seeing an increase in our instructional practices. Let me add one additional area that I would attribute this to. And while we are not quite where we want to be, we're getting a lot of traction based on how we are implementing co-teaching models in many of our schools. Where, again, this is where you have two teachers in a classroom, and they are implementing one of a number of models that allows a student to have just a lot more attention, if you may, right? Doing the direct instruction or doing very targeted instruction from teachers. So those are some of the reasons we can attribute to the growth and successes we've seen.
Dr. Roberts, on page two in what is not going well, you've talked a lot about absenteeism, and 45% of sixth-to-eighth black males are chronically absent. I'm curious what specific strategies are being deployed specifically for black males beyond the traditional engagement strategies? I know there's a campaign right now around absenteeism, but what are we doing differently to help get these young men into schools?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So the approach that we're taking to get black males into schools is the very same approach we're taking at every student in the school. Anytime one student or a single student is absent, that's a concern for the teachers who are teaching them and certainly for the leaders of schools. And so we have a number of approaches. One, we've started in terms of big picture. We recognized very early on, when we did a deep data analysis, that chronic absenteeism was an issue for us as a district. And while we have invested in English and math curriculum, a culturally responsive framework, and we're seeing where there is improvement across the board in our instructional practices, if students do not have butts in seats, they're not going to be able to benefit. And so we've started, I'll start with the high level, Everyday Matters Campaign, right? Where, as an entire district, we are invested in that. Additionally, we have a number of attendance teams who are consistently monitoring student attendance and are working collaboratively with our school teams, right? To provide support, to strategize around what is happening with students, why are they absent? We have a number of teammates who are going above and beyond by calling the homes of students who are chronically absent. They are visiting the homes of students who are chronically absent, and they're not doing this in a transactional manner. They are actually trying to get to sort of the root cause analysis, trying to understand what are the barriers to students not being in school? What are the barriers that are, that's preventing students, particularly in much lower grades, but specifically since we're talking about our middle grades? Why are they not there? And while this last point that I'll share is not yet necessarily scientifically proven, I think there has to be a recognition and acknowledgement that yesterday's student is not today's student. And so we have to pivot in how we're supporting students by creating school environments that truly, truly meets their needs. And there is no unwillingness on the part of our leaders or teachers to do so. We just have to be able to do so with a commitment and with much more consistency.
Just a follow-up question to that. If we have adults visiting families or homes, what what access or what data do we have access to that we could say these are the things that are affecting someone not attending school?
Yeah, those are, the data that we get is based on those conversations, right? Those relational conversations that goes beyond just the transactional. I have had the opportunity to benefit from some of the debrief conversations from either our success managers or community schools coordinators, or even teachers who have called or visited homes, to try to ascertain what is getting in the way? And some of the reality that is faced by many of our families goes beyond what the, a typical school system can address. But in this instance, I do not characterize the Mont public schools as a typical school system, because we are truly investing in making sure that we treat every single student and their family as an extension of our own families. And so teammates are really knocking on doors, right? Going above and beyond. Recently, had a conversation with a parent who has three students in the Mont public schools and shared that the reason he could not send his students to school regularly regularly is because he had some car troubles. And I shared that information with some of our directors. And one of our directors shared with us as a team that, and it was a good reminder, we have an automotive shop here at Central Campus. here at Central Campus, and let's try to find a way to make sure that we're sharing that information with some of our parents. We are going to make sure that we are really being really thoughtful and creative and innovative as we are creating approaches to really go meet the needs of all of our parents and students. You know, I even shared, because I want to make sure that everyone understands that when we think about our chronic absenteeism issue, this is a district-wide issue. And I too, and this is certainly not a point of braggadocio, but one, we are recognized that I need to also model, similar to many of our principals who either call homes or visit homes. I have a small list of students who are chronically absent, and I've been visiting homes. You know, I jokingly shared recently that I visited a home of a dad who, when he came to the door initially, the first minute and a half of the conversation, he denied that he has students who attended the Mont public schools. Because here I was showing up at the door at 10:00 in the morning dressed in a suit and tie. I can see why he probably thought, "I'm not giving you any information." So, I have a different strategy. The next time I visit, I'm going to wear a DMPS sweatshirt. So, anyone who wants to volunteer, give me sweatshirts, please do so. But what came from that conversation is something that I know our principals have been experiencing. After about two minutes into the conversation, he shared with pride that, one, each of his three students are now in school, and, two, he had his own personal challenges. And it's not often that we take the time to find out what is getting in the way. And Mr. Alonso Diaz, that's exactly what our teachers, our support staff, and our principals are doing, and I'm proud of the work that they're doing to try to make sure that we're getting a dent, making a dent into the chronic absenteeism issue.
Thank you.
Dr. Roberts, can you help me understand just some of the numbers here? And pardon my inexperience if these are dumb questions. What's the N number here? What's the, do we know what the, when we talk about percentages, I think sitting in the audience or watching at home, the drop is abrupt, and I'm wondering if we talk so much about this being a smaller sample size, and so a smaller variation of students not doing well on these assessments might move the numbers more abruptly than it would in a larger group? And so, what's our, what's the N number? What's the number of students that we're talking about here when we talk about our 11th grade black male students, when we get down to that number?
I don't have that N number here, but it's significant enough for us to
Okay.
Acknowledge that, yes, we need to make sure that we are providing the kind of supports to black male 11th grade students.
And then, we talk about these things in relation at the board table to where our priorities are and how we're going to budget for them. So, I'm wondering, over the time, and this is, this is probably not a question you have an answer to, but I think I'd like to know going forward, what are we investing and what have we invested in these goals and guardrails so that we can be transparent about, are we actually doing what we say we're doing in this governance model, which is putting budget dollars toward these priorities? So, I guess, I don't know if you know that off the top of your head, but how much money have we put into this, this particular monitoring point?
Yeah. So, what I'll share as I think about our general funds, we, last year, we invested, 59% of our funds were invested into our instructional model. As we are in the midst right now of revisiting and refining our goals and guardrails, in the coming weeks, the CFO and I and the rest of the team will provide the board with a level of specificity around where we are intending to put our investments into each of our three goals and five guardrails so that we can truly not only move the needle, but keep our finger on the pulse of how we are getting traction with these investments. And again, this is not going to be a sort of stagnant approach. It's going to be dynamic, because we are likely to make pivots throughout the course of the year as we are continuing to monitor how we are progressing.
Dr. Roberts, on page one, under what's going well, you identify that 22% of black males have made aggressive growth. Can you help us understand what is attributing to this aggressive growth of that particular population of students?
Yeah, certainly, because we've not, we have this goal, right, that really inspires us to focus on black males, but also an acknowledgement and recognition that as we have looked at our historic trends, we have essentially failed black males. And so, as a result of that, we have seen an increased focus on black males across the entire system. Additionally, there is an investment by our teachers and leaders to make sure that we are looking at culturally responsive pedagogy that truly meets the needs of those students, right? Again, I continue, I'm continuing to refer to our gleam framework, which provides us with some guidance to make sure that we are exposing our black males to high-level instruction, instruction that truly is engaging and values their culture and lived experiences, and instruction that is affirming of who they are, and instruction, more importantly, that is meaningful, that is relatable to them, right, that makes them feel inspired to want to be there and be active participants in any given lesson. So, those are the areas that I attribute to sort of that growth. It's a point of pride, but we are going to celebrate momentarily, but also recognize that there's still so much work for us to do. We don't want to sit in this place of celebration with what we're seeing as aggressive growth. And again, aggressive growth is anything that is just about or above the 75th percentile. So, again, something for us to celebrate, but not to sit there.
Thank you for that. Madam Vice Chair, let me know if I'm out of bounds, but you just attributed that growth to gleam, but then we're also hearing that gleam is an area that we're struggling with from the standpoint of proper walkthroughs and implementation and things like that. So, if we could, in the future, rather than just using this high-level cloud of gleam as both what's going well and what's not going well, I'm having difficulty really grasping and grappling with the pieces that are under the what's going well is gleam and what's not going well is gleam. And so, for future, if maybe we could get down a little bit into truly what about gleam is going well and where those struggles are as well.
Madam Board Member, if you may indulge me, I would love to provide some clarification. And so, both things can be true at the same time, right? Where, again, gleam is in its infancy of implementation, probably about eight or nine months. And so, when I think about what's going well, I can certainly add and highlight for the board's benefit a number of points. One, the fact that we have teachers and leaders who are embracing the framework, the fact that we have teachers and leaders who are engaged in a lot of intellectual preparation so that they can become conversant with the framework. If I pivot to look at the converse of what's not going well, certainly, you know, we have teachers who, because of the learning curve, are not necessarily implementing each of the letters of that acronym with fidelity just yet. So, hopefully, that is helpful. I neglected to, but allow me to also share that as I think about one of the reasons that we ought to attribute, and this is probably one of the most important reasons, to the aggressive growth of black males, is because of black males, because of who they are, right? This perception that black males were not as capable as or are underperformance while students who have other identities are capable of and ready for school, it's a pernicious myth and one that we have to stop here in the Mont public schools. So, the number one reason that I certainly should have led with is as we think about, why are black males now demonstrating some growth? It is because of black males who are now given an opportunity to show who they are and the fact that they possess an incredible amount of intellectual horsepower that we have just not cultivated.
Thank you. I appreciate you mentioning that mindset, as it is something that we, as a board, work on as well. So, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we are
Yeah, sorry, I just have one. I think we're all acutely aware, that sense of belonging for all students, right, in addition to black males, where you're seeing it significantly, and attendance are massive factors in why academic outcomes aren't happening. And I guess I'm, and maybe this is a conversation when we get to budget, but the hands-on grassroots showing up, knocking on doors, showing our young people that we care, using community-based organizations, all of those things seem like really critical levers. And I, I'm, I think, wondering if that is a strategy that works? So, if there's evidence that that type of more aggressive approach to show up, connect, identify barriers, try and knock the barriers down, if the evidence shows that that's a strategy that works, whether it's for all students or ideally for our students of color, should we be thinking about that? And if so, what's going to come off the plate of teachers and/or whoever are doing those types of, who will need to do that type of work? So, I mean, is it, is it an evidence-based strategy that showing up, kind of knocking on doors in the positive way, in the supportive, how can I help? It would seem it would work, right?
Yeah, thank you. That's an excellent question, certainly a point for us to consider. You know, there's a substantial body of research that really shows a documented association between teachers or adults in the pre-K-12 system who are intentionally building a relationship or rapport with students, and how that certainly inspires students to want to go above and beyond. And so, while we've used home visits and knocking on doors as just two of our strategies, there, it's certainly not an exhaustive list. But to your point, Madam Chair, yep, yes, I will certainly be, you know, continue to come to the board, right, with requests for resource allocation to make sure that we're giving schools exactly what they need to be their best selves. And so, yep, to your point, while teachers are not likely to have anything additional removed from their plates, but we are also not necessarily putting on a teacher's plate, right, this sort of non-instructional work. We're expecting them to knock on doors, but that's something that teachers organically do, right? That's why we tend to think of educators, especially teachers, as superheroes, seriously. We're not in a place where we can necessarily predict right now, well, what we are likely to remove from their plates because of this additional necessity for us to continue to make sure that we are engaging families. But that's why we have additional positions that the board has approved, right? Community schools coordinators, success managers, counselors. And so, I'm happy that you raised this, because I want to make sure that we are creating spaces to continue to have these really robust and healthy conversations about what schools need in order for them to be successful as we engage families.
Just a follow-up. Just?
Just.
Just?
Yes.
Just a follow-up comment. Madam Chair, you mentioned an aggressive approach that is being implemented to reach families and students, and I believe that if it's something that works for the district and works to effectively connect with families, from my perspective, I don't see it as an aggressive approach. I see it as a necessary approach to relationship building, which is something I think that is, that should be done. It's not, it's not aggressive. I think it's, it's a way to connect with families and, it's natural, it's necesario, it's importante, right? It's a natural way to connect with people, and it's, I just have to say that it's not aggressive. Any other questions? If not, we're going to move on to our how questions. Who would like to go first?
I think I asked all of my questions. Well, okay, how, under what is not going well on page two, the suspensions and deferred expulsions and students having decreased access to school as a result is troubling. How will you aim to increase the academic aspect of student, the student experience when they are on deferred expulsions and suspensions? Because some will happen.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So, while we have this ambitious goal of having zero suspensions, again, because we know that our students are bringing very different or diverse set of experiences to us, we will have instances where they will be part of an out-of-school suspension group. So, there are three areas that we have focused on to make sure that we are minimizing that disruption or interruption of their academic pursuits. One, students who are at home are benefiting from our virtual teachers who are reaching out to them to make sure that they are providing some continuity of instruction. And I believe at our grade six through eight level, we have four dedicated teachers who are doing that work. Additionally, we are certainly keenly aware that when we have students who are in possession of an IEP or a 504 plan, that already puts them a little bit behind the curve. And so, when they are suspended and have to be at home, we also make sure that we are providing as much support as possible to maintain some compliance with their IEP goals. And then, thirdly, again, we talked about our partnership with some of our community partners, where we're sending those students into those spaces so that they have the option, at least to have some structures where they can benefit from continuity of instruction. It's not ideal. I actually want us to get to this place where our restorative practices are so strong that we are not suspending students, right? Inevitably, we will have students who are probably finding themselves in that place, but I want us to get to this place where we're not. You know, as recent as today, I looked at our suspension data by schools for each one of our schools, and, you know, we have schools who, to date, have only had two suspensions, out-of-school suspensions. And then, we have schools that have exceeded 100, 200 suspensions. And so, there's a variance. And so, you know, we're going to, we're going to continue to look at and examine what are those practices that are happening in pockets that allows a school or school leader to make certain decisions, while acknowledging that every single school has a very unique DNA, very different set of experiences with their students. And so, we want to make sure that we're not pointing fingers at or blaming school leaders, right, for that variance in data, but finding ways to support them.
Thank you.
Dr. Roberts, on page two, and what are we going to do next? Next steps, the last two bullet points reference the teaching and learning team, staffing, fully staffing the team to dedicate more resources towards middle school in the next year and finding ways to support the transition. Can you connect those two dots and maybe talk a little bit about, is this class size we're after, or how are those two maybe related at the middle school level?
Yeah, thank you. So, we are certainly going to have a comprehensive approach by looking at three different areas. One, personnel resources. Two, we want to look at support that comes from the district office, and that includes our teaching and learning team, our student support services team. And then, three, make sure that we are being thoughtful about resource allocation, and this includes every aspect of our financial resources. You know, while we are continuing to follow, and to a great extent, we have to, formulas, right, around how we are allocating resources, we have to get to this place, right, in sort of contemporary pre-K-12 education, where we are allowing ourselves to the greatest extent that is within the parameters of what is legal and moral, to make sure we are allocating resources in an equitable way, right, based on the needs. You know, our 10 middle schools have very, very different needs. And I think if we continue to be rigid around a formula, we're going to miss the mark on how we are being sort of equitably supporting them. So, yeah. Finally, what I'll share is for next year, in terms of middle schools, as you referenced the second-to-last bullet point, we are looking at having two curriculum coordinator positions that will be filled. We are currently in the final stages of hiring a middle school director who will support our current middle school teaching and learning director. And then, we are truly excited about the fact that we are also in the final phase or stages of hiring a chief academic officer, because as a school system, we have not shied away from sharing that we want to make sure that we are instructionally focused, and a chief academic officer will certainly help us in that regard.
Dr. Roberts, page two, under what's not going, or what you're going to do, I'm sorry. How will you make sure that the collaboration that you addressed on bullet point three from the bottom up takes place effectively or that it works to get the results that you want to see?
Yeah, thank you. The one thing we are going to try to, you know, we wish we had more time than any given day. There is no paucity at all of a desire amongst our teammates, right, whether they are curriculum coordinators, instructional coaches, teachers, or leaders, to want to do the work or engage. We are finding ourselves in this, navigating this dilemma where we just don't have enough time. And so, one way that we want to be thoughtful about that is utilizing our professional development days, and certainly every single opportunity that we have during the summer. And we may need to think about, how can we compensate teachers and some of our personnel to either be there after school or to make sure that they're dedicating some time during the summer, time for which they're going to be compensated, right? Again, because we're asking them to leave their families, we're asking them to go above and beyond. As a district, we have to find a way to make sure that we are inspiring them through a number of other means. So, we have to find that time. We cannot make excuses about why we're not creating the space for them to really collaborate with each other, to have really strong PLCs, or what we call UPPs, right, universal sort of planning. So, we have to find that time, Mr. Alonso Diaz. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
How were, how were voices from student-facing levels, so like our school principals or a school-based administration or teacher leaders that are in the buildings, how did they influence the investments that in your next steps, in your what we're going to do next steps and the investments that we're going to make to see the needle move rapidly towards achieving our goal?
Yeah. Our school-level personnel are a critical part of our decision-making. We are far from, and I certainly can speak to the last nine months, we are not a top-down decision-making organization. We know that, again, I've used the term with this, with the board before, the Japanese term, gemba, that translates into the place of value. And essentially, the place of value is in schools and classrooms. And so, all of those mission-critical decisions that we are going to make will have the voices of our teachers, will have the voices of support staff, and the voices of leaders. And, you know, I can see with utmost confidence that I believe that our cabinet members understand that philosophically, that's where we sit right now, you know? And I have to tell you, some of the feedback that we continue to get from our teachers and support staff and school leaders really has driven and inspired so much of the innovation that is happening right now and that will happen next year. So, the decisions will never, ever be top-down without getting some input from those who are closest to the work.
Any other questions? Más preguntas?
What can the board do to help?
What can the board do to help?
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate that question, and certainly indulge me. You know, I've shared on a few occasions that, as I think about the professionals who are in the district, particularly those who are in positions of leadership, I start with a cabinet, for example, a 12-member team, whose mission it is to just really make strategically-aligned decisions to ensure continuous improvement. There is a total of close to 400 years of educational leadership. And so, I think just the board continuing to do exactly what you've done, and that is to just allow us to have sort of that professional flexibility to make those instructional operational decisions. And one of the things that I've appreciated about the board is just your willingness to not only ask the questions around how we're doing, but to push and challenge our mental models. So, how you can help is to continue to So how you can help is to continue to ask those challenging questions, continue to push our thinking, but also to make sure that you have this proclivity as a board to respond favorably to the district when we come to you with a recommendation about what we know to be best around instructional delivery, around operations for our schools.
Anyone else?
Just a note, Patrick, I was looking up that N-Value on Tableau, and it still has our old goal listed as Goal Three. So if, it's still the ninth grade Algebra I goal. So if we could update the public tab, public-facing Tableau dashboard so that that's accurate, that'd be great.
We will. I'm seeing head nods at the back of the room already. We'll update that.
Thank you.
Alguien más, anyone else? No? Madam Chair, señora presidenta, back to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Maria. Thanks for leading us through that conversation. We will now move forward with deciding whether we, as a board, accept the monitoring report. May I have a motion and a second to approve item C1?
Alonso, so moved.
Campos, second.
We have a motion by Alonso and a second by Campos. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved 6-0. Next on the agenda is the public forum, followed by the consent and regular agenda. We provide speakers at the forum an opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes regarding items that are not on the board agenda. We also allow any person the opportunity to speak to the board for up to five minutes following the presentation of an agenda item. If anyone wishes to speak during any portion of the business meeting, please email rosa.rios@demoineschools.org. The same speaking protocols apply to all individuals who wish to address the board. Speakers will be called individually, and we ask they state their name and address prior to providing comments. Students and minors do not have to provide their addresses. Guests of the board are encouraged to speak to matters relating to the programs, services, and operations of DMPS. Please remember that Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. We ask all speakers to avoid references to personalities or character attacks, as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. The use of inappropriate language will not be tolerated, and individuals choosing to do so will be gavelled out of order and asked to excuse themselves from the premises or escorted out by district security. As a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in a discussion with public forum speakers, as it is our obligation to discuss only matters posted in the public agenda for the sake of transparency and opportunity afforded to all community stakeholders. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff and/or board follow-up at a time after the meeting. Thanks for your participation. We appreciate your feedback and input. Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers for the public forum?
Yes, we do. First up, I'll call Del Marion. Marion.
Del Marion. My address is 123225th Street. And I believe we're missing someone. Should we wait a little bit or? Avoiding them.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I got to tell you, I'm going to have to pivot just a little bit because that session went a little longer than I thought it was going to go. I had someone to help me with my presentation today, and they had to take off. That was my grandson. I grew up in Chicago, but I've been here now in Iowa for 34 years. And I've done a lot of volunteering in Des Moines Public Schools since the mid-'90s. Tonight, we had three generations here, myself, my oldest son, and my grandsons. My oldest grandson, and just real quickly, they had to leave because my oldest grandson, who was 12 years old, he's a tutor. And so he needed to get to tutoring some young people in West Des Moines. What we talked about tonight, well, I wish I had more time to talk about it because I think I could hit you, help you all hit a lot of those benchmarks. But first of all, I sent you all an email. I'm not sure everyone got it, to talk about what I wanted to discuss tonight. If you did not get it, I'm going to resend it again. I sent it to the entire board. Couple of requests. I'm going to be requesting that I meet with the board members. I'm told I can only meet three at a time. What I'd like to discuss tonight and what was in my, in my topics and also in my email is to address bullying, drugs, and violence in all Des Moines schools. The second item was to improve parental participation. And the third item was to improve the spirit in all schools. Now, when I moved here 34 years ago, my oldest son was five. Now he's, he's 38. I have three sons graduated from Iowa, Iowa State, and you and I. And I have two grandsons and I have a granddaughter. I've invested a lot of my time into Des Moines Public Schools, even though I live in West Des Moines. And there's probably a thousand of individuals that can back that. My oldest son created a platform called the Inclusive Cultural University, ICU. I believe that platform will address a lot of the issues that we spoke about tonight. Now, even though I'm an African-American black male, the platform is designed for all students, all teachers, as well as parents. And so I'm hoping to have some dialogue with you all at a further date. Can't go into details tonight because there's not enough time. And as I said before, the last time that I was here, you were signing your contract. Tonight was certainly a little different for me. I got to be honest with you. But I'm looking forward to discussing with you all at a few, at a further, at a later date in terms of how we can help Des Moines Public Schools. I'm a little bit saddened in terms of some of the things that I've seen in Des Moines Public Schools and me volunteering. My background's in corporate America, but my passion has always been schools. So from that, thank you for your time, and thank you all for what you do.
Thank you, Del.
Thank you.
Next up is RJ Mellor. Next is Colin Coulter.
My name is Colin Coulter. I live at 3270 Garfield Avenue. I teach biology and chemistry at East High School and will be returning next year due to the excellence of the administration. I'm here today to bring you the latest research on the consequences of a smartphone-based childhood. This research, conducted over the last 10 years and drawn from many different fields, has been compiled by psychologist and professor Jonathan Haidt in the essay publication, The Atlantic. Distinguished board members, the research is clear. There are no benefits of a smartphone-based childhood when compared with the massive drawbacks. If you're unfamiliar with the statistics, let me review them here. Rates of depression and anxiety, which had remained steady around the globe in the 2000s, rose by more than 50% from 2010 to 2019. In that same period, the adolescent suicide rate rose almost 50%. And tragically, for girls aged 10 to 14, the suicide rate has almost tripled. Mental health is not the only thing that's changed. Loneliness and friendliness, friendlessness among teens and adults began surging around 2012, accompanied by clear decreases in reading, math, and social skills. The percentage of high school seniors who identify on a survey that life often seems meaningless has doubled. Why this dramatic increase in social and psychological problems? Dr. Haidt writes that the answer can be stated simply. It was around 2012 when adolescents traded in their flip phones for smartphones and moved much of their social lives online, particularly onto platforms designed for virality and addiction. The problem of smartphones and social media is one of collective action, and this is where the school board has a large part to play. We recognize that we should all ditch social media, but the cost of being the only one who does it is too high. Schools and school boards are in a unique position to support cultural change by communicating with parents guidelines on smartphone and tech use. Three recommendations from Dr. Haidt follow. First, schools can communicate to parents that young people should not have smartphones. Until high school or later, young people can easily get by with a flip phone and monitored internet access at home. The second piece of advice that schools can communicate is that students should not have social media accounts before age 16. By avoiding making an account, young people can still watch videos on YouTube and social media and Instagram, but without the account, algorithms cannot harvest data necessary to make it an addictive experience. The third recommendation that school boards and schools can communicate to parents is that young people need more independence, free play, and responsibility in the real world. Parents must replace screen experiences with real-world experiences. However, a fourth and final recommendation is where the schools are most pivotal, and that is phone-free schools. Giving teachers permission to individually restrict phones in their specific classrooms is not enough and has become a burden on teachers. Dr. Haidt writes that the only way to get students' minds off of their phones during the school day is to require all students to put their phones in a locker at the start of a day, a policy that is becoming known nationally as a way for the day. I want to encourage the board to look into the practices of other schools, districts, and states that have prohibited phone use during the day, and I'll end with this. A great philosopher once said that half measures yield half results. Therefore, if the cause is worthy, dedicate yourself fully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Michael Farley.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Michael Farley. I live at 3221 Southwest 33rd Street. I'm a retired physician assistant. My wife and I have lived in Des Moines since 1982. We send our two children to Des Moines Public Schools. One daughter attended Edmunds Magnet School back in the day. Sorry for the history lesson. Then Kalanand Middle School and was a member of the Roosevelt High School class of 1995. Our son attended Merrill Middle School and then Roosevelt class of 2003. Tonight, I represent Iowa CCI, a statewide membership organization that believes that change comes best from the bottom up. We have thousands of members across the state, rural and urban, who have been speaking out and organizing against Governor Reynolds' attacks on public education. Over the past year, we have lobbied against the voucher bill, which in its first year of operation, has siphoned off greater than $100 million from public education in Iowa. Most recently, we worked against the Area Education Reorganization Bill, which is another name for cutting and defunding the area education agencies. We believe that this is a part of a long-term strategy to starve public education. Iowa CCI thinks that it's time for citizens to rise up and push back on these policies. You folks know better than me, because of recent history, that every year you get less money to do more work. They say they give you a raise, but it doesn't count for inflation, and so it's not a raise at all. And you know what this has led to? Belt tightening, budget cuts, cultural and arts cuts, staff cuts, teacher cuts, increased class sizes. It's, it's just inevitable. We know you can't do it any other way. And yet, this leads to policy, these policy decisions lead to more criticism of public education failing our children. We believe that the Des Moines School Board and the superintendent need to do more within their limits to push back against the Reynolds anti-public-school agenda. CCI members are very concerned that Superintendent Roberts supported the confirmation of Mackenzie Snow as lead Iowa's Department of Education. Ms. Snow has a track record of working for private school vouchers, and how will that help Des Moines Public Schools thrive? Iowa CCI completely and wholeheartedly supports DMPS students, teachers, and staff. We will continue to push back against funding cuts to public education, against any expansions of the school voucher program, and we are against legislating criticism of teachers. We are against micromanaging and developing curriculum by legislative fiat. We are against banning public health policies in public schools, and we are against the free exchange, we are against attacks on the free exchange of ideas in the classroom and the school and public libraries.
30 seconds remaining.
To support us in these efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cherie Martis. Cherie.
When you're short, you have to make all kinds of adjustments. Thank you, Board and Superintendent Roberts, for this opportunity. My name is Cherie Martis. I live at 2904 East 22nd Street on the east side. I'm a proud east sider. I'm currently president of Iowa CCI Action Fund, and I'm a retired Des Moines Public School teacher with 40 years of service for the district. I'd like to begin by, first of all, extending condolences to the family of Terry Caldwell-Johnson on behalf of Iowa citizens for community improvement. Terry was a guiding light and a pillar in the community and a leader on this board. I had the privilege to teach her children at Brody Middle School. Terry was a great parent and an outspoken supporter of public schools. I'm here today because our Iowa CCI membership has some concerns regarding the enthusiastic support of Superintendent Roberts for Mackenzie Snow as Director of our State Ed Department. Here are some of our concerns. She is unqualified. Her undergraduate degree was in political science. She has no experience in public classrooms or as an administrator in public schools. I appreciate her trips to the Des Moines classrooms, but what could she sincerely gain without a foundation in teacher education? You mentioned she can read instructional code. That's a basic requirement. That doesn't qualify her. That's like saying a doctor can read an EKG. It doesn't mean they're qualified to make institutional decisions. Mackenzie Snow has a track record of advocating for private school vouchers. We need leadership that supports funding for our public schools. We need a Department of Ed Director who is respected as an advocate and champion of public schools. She is not that. Vouchers will continue to funnel hundreds of millions of tax dollars to private schools annually. That is a blueprint she has been hired to support and expand at the detriment of our public schools. Iowa CCI has a track record of supporting initiatives that uplift the Des Moines community and everyday people. We have a saying, "We all do better when we all do better." Superintendent Roberts and Board, we want to work with you. We believe that every child, no matter their zip code, background, race, gender, identity, ability, has an equal right to a quality education. That means fully funding all public schools across the state, urban and rural, so that every child gets an accurate and honest education that prepares them for their future and an opportunity to pursue their dreams. Students deserve an opportunity to grow and learn, and together, we can defend students, their future, and advocate for a more affirming and supportive educational system. And to our teachers and support staff at Des Moines Public Schools, as well as our parents and our students, we see you, we hear you, and we support you, and we will fight for you and with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dartanion Brown.
Good evening, all. Yes. My name is Dartanion Brown. Good day to you, Dr. Roberts. Glad you're here. And the board members of Des Moines School, School Public Schools. My name is Dartanion. I live at 2723 Columbia Street, Highland Park, and I'm a product of a fine Iowa public school education that I received starting at Webster Elementary, Amos Hyatt Middle, and North High School, classes 67. I also serve on the board of Iowa CCI, a grassroots statewide organization that fights for racial, environmental, economic, and probably educational justice. I came here today to speak briefly on the subject of vouchers. You probably don't need me to tell you the financial impact of the Governor's voucher initiative. This board will be dealing with the fallout for years to come if we don't change course. This is a public school district, and as our new superintendent, we should expect you to zealously stand up, stand up for and protect what we consider an invaluable public source. Much respect to you, Dr. Roberts, but your endorsement of the Governor's pick for State Director of Education, just now elevated on a party-line vote, may have undermined your standing with those who know the history and trajectory of school privatization efforts here in Iowa. here in Iowa. We would expect our superintendent of schools to zealously protect the interests of Des Moines students via the time-honored process of nurturing the parent-teacher-administration partnerships that produce the sort of outcomes that we can all be proud of. Anyone remotely familiar with the education process understands you've got to have adequate financial support to get it done. After listening to the pleas of parents and teachers over the last few months of board meetings online, I'm home and I get to listen. It's great. I know this community loves its public schools. Parents love their kids and want the best for them, as do their teachers. At this moment in history, though, we have a legislature and a governor making the attainment of that goal much more difficult. At this point, I strongly suggest that DMPS become more involved in providing this community leadership with focus on winning back increased resources for public education. The more you partner with each other, parents, teachers, everybody, the more we partner with each other, the greater your voices become as we take on these legislators that are fixed and fixated on passing these miserly 2% budget increases for the largest, most diverse district in the state. Community voices must be heard. They must be heard in spite of the fact that sometimes we can't regularly attend meetings like this. Thank you for listening to all of us, the Board, Superintendent Roberts, and most importantly, the parents and students of DMPS. You guys deserve the best. By talking together, by acting together, we can get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Jennifer Anessa.
I'm coming to you tonight as a licensed clinical social worker, former school-based therapist, current behavior strategist, mother of two TMBS students, and a concerned community member. I want to acknowledge the tremendous pressure that the district and its staff are under due to chronic underfunding by the state. Recently, we have heard stories from our CSCs, BFLs, librarians, and more, all of whom play important roles in our schools. We hear about the continued disparities in academic outcomes for our Black and Brown students. We hear discussions about chronic absenteeism, building authentic relationships, increasing feelings of safety, and improving students' sense of belonging. To address these issues, we have the GLEAM framework, EL and IM curriculum, where changing hiring and retention practices. All of these strategies are incredibly important. However, one solution that has not been discussed in a robust manner is mental health and wellness, even though I know that we all agree this is an important issue. In order for us to understand the scope of this problem, 1 in 5 U.S. children ages 3 to 17 has a mental, emotional, behavior, or developmental disorder. And more broadly, 87% of teens and young adults report the regular occurrence of mental health challenges. In addition, since the pandemic, and as we heard earlier tonight, smartphones, rates of depression, anxiety, and suicidal thoughts are on the rise. The Surgeon General has stated that this has most heavily impacted those who are already vulnerable, including youth with disabilities, racial and ethnic minorities, LGBTQ+ youth, and other marginalized communities. We must make it a priority to develop and implement a comprehensive approach to mental health and well-being. People may be wondering, we have school counselors, social workers, some schools have mental health therapists, staff receive PD on SEL and trauma, we have behavior strategists, and soon we'll be implementing an SEL curriculum. Isn't that enough? And unfortunately, the answer is no. There are many reasons why. First, the strategies that already exist are not integrated into a comprehensive mental health and wellness system within the district. The philosophies and practices that do exist are not consistently implemented, nor are they adequately monitored. And there is little accountability if existing policies and best practices are not followed. There are not adequate supports provided to schools to help them build functioning teams and systems, particularly schools that the district knows needs that targeted assistance. Mental health professionals that are present in the building may not be consulted or utilized effectively. And there's confusion regarding the similarities and differences between SEL programs and mental health services. They are not one in the same. An experienced mental health professional is not part of the decision-making process at the highest level of the district, and this sends a message that this voice is not valued. We do not have a mental health literacy program, which is an essential component of a mental health and wellness system. With all of these challenges, the result is an inequitable system. Schools vary widely in terms of offering a full range of mental health and wellness services, as well as having appropriate systems in place to provide both school-wide supports and data-driven decision-making processes to determine which students would benefit from more targeted services. I'm extremely concerned that without the Board's guidance through goals and guardrails, which drive district leaders' priorities and budgetary decisions, that the current disjointed approach will continue. This is an urgent matter. We cannot be the model for urban education without a systemic approach to mental health and well-being. We must do better. Our students, families, and staff deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for speakers. Those are all the speakers.
Thanks to all for sharing your thoughts this evening. Ms. Alonso, I believe you have the consent motion.
I do. I move that the Board adopt the balance of the consent agenda items in accordance with the recommended action for each item on the consent agenda, including bills previously authorized, certified, and approved for payment by the Board Secretary in the amount of $11,422,846.84.
We have a motion by Alonso. Is there a second? Excuse me.
Second.
We have a motion by Alonso and a second by Martirano. Is there any discussion, or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
We did the -- we amended. We took off six.
Yeah, okay. The consent items are approved 6-0. Next on the agenda are a series of public hearings. We have Item F1, Public Hearing for B9186 Mitchell Secure Entry. The public hearing will come to order. Is there anyone wishing to speak to Item F1? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend the Board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by Studio Meli for security entry upgrades at Mitchell Early Learning Center. Hold a public hearing and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve Item F1?
Martirano, so moved.
Dix, second.
We have a motion by Martirano and a second by Dix. Is there any discussion, or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved 6-0. Next item is F2, Public Hearing for Goodrell Secure Entry. The public hearing will come to order. Is there anyone wishing to speak to Item F1? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend the Board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPN Architects for secure entry upgrades at Goodrell Middle School. Hold a public hearing and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve Item F2?
Motion, the Campos.
Second.
We have a motion by Campos. Sorry. Yeah, we have a motion by Campos and a second by Martirano. Is there any discussion? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved 6-0. Next, Item F3, Public Hearing for Perkins Secure Entry. The public hearing will come to order. Is there anyone wishing to speak to Item F1? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend the Board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by RMH Architects for secure entry upgrades at Perkins Elementary School. Hold a public hearing and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve Item F3?
Dix, so moved.
Alonso, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Alonso. Is there any discussion? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved 6-0. Next item, F4, Public Hearing for Property Conveyance to City of Des Moines, East 18th and Easton. The public hearing will come to order. Is there anyone wishing to speak to Item F4? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend the Board approve the conveyance of property at East 18th and Easton to the City of Des Moines following this public hearing.
May I have a motion and a second to approve Item F4?
Alonso, so moved.
Knox, second.
We have a motion by Alonso and a second by Knox. Is there any discussion? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved 6-0. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. First item is G1, Personnel Recommendations: Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend the Board receive, file, and approve my recommendations that a contract be terminated effective immediately for the reasons that were set forth in the notice.
May I have a motion and a second to accept the superintendent's recommendation?
Martirano, so moved. Alonso, second.
We have a motion by Martirano and a second by Alonso. Is there any discussion? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved 6-0. Next, we will discuss the pulled item, E6, Professional Learning Unbound Ed. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend the Board approve Unbound Ed as the provider of professional learning focused on implementing grade-level, engaging, affirming, and meaningful instruction GLEAM.
May I have a motion and a second to accept the superintendent's recommendation?
Martinez, so moved.
Dix, second.
We have a motion by Martirano and a second by Dix. Is there any discussion, or does anyone have any questions? So I was the one who pulled it. So I might as well ask my questions. I think, Dr. Roberts, and I foreshadowed this in our conversation, $2 million is not an insignificant sum of money. And so I think I'm looking for three pieces of information. One, what is the total to date that's been spent on GLEAM? Two, how specifically will this $2 million support professional development? And three, is this an FY24/25 request, or should we expect that there'll be an additional expenditure in the FY25 budget? Those are the three questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The very specific amount I do not have here, I am looking at my team. I believe that we would like some time to come back to the Board to provide sort of specificity around the actual dollar amount. Secondly, yeah, this is an investment certainly going into school year '24, '25. And thirdly, you know, we have shared at a number of meetings our commitment to invest in GLEAM. You know, the question often is asked before we make such a sizable investment, are there sort of competitive frameworks that we can use in order for us to get to the desired outcome? And in this instant instance, the desired outcome is for us to really demonstrate how invested we are and committed to ensuring that we provide a research-based and credible framework that truly meets the needs of historically marginalized students, particularly around providing them with an exemplary instructional model. And Unbound Ed, as an organization that has created this framework, is the one that really stands out, heads and shoulders above anything else. And so that's the reason for investment. You know, I'm happy to work with the team, to furnish the Board with any additional information that you need that will sort of show or make a compelling case as to why we need to make this investment. If we are going to say publicly how invested we are in ensuring that we are closing the gap, not only instructionally, but creating opportunities for students who have not, in previous years, had those opportunities created for them, then it really allows us, or we should be inspired, to put our money where our mouth is, so to speak. And I know that this Board, in my nine months here, you have demonstrated an unwavering commitment to make sure that we are supporting not only all the students we serve, but there has to be a willingness to make sure that we are looking at our decision-making through the lens of equity. Are we giving every single student exactly what they need for them to be their best selves and for them to certainly be able to close the gaps that we have seen plaguing Des Moines Public Schools for a very long time? So, Madam Chair and Board, I am enthused about coming back to the Board with very specific numbers, and even if it pleases the Board as well to make sure that we are also providing you with an outline, maybe in the form of a scope and sequence, about what it is we are investing in, what we intend to offer. So typically, when the Board is going to make such a sizable investment, I think the question of return on investment often comes to the forefront. We are not positioned at this time, because of how early we are in implementation, to accurately predict the return on investment. But we believe that based on sort of the earlier findings, this bodes well for what is to come.
And I appreciate you indulging my healthy skepticism. I think one of the things when I came to the Board was hearing from teachers about the multiple new frameworks and new ideas. And so it sounds to me as though kind of the strategy that you're taking is EL curriculum, our math curriculum, GLEAM as the framework. That's kind of where we're all in, in terms of investment of professional development funds.
Absolutely. You know, and let me just share with utmost confidence that I recognize that one of the challenges that has plagued public education and public school systems is initiative fatigue, right? This proclivity to always move towards the flavor of the day, the next new thing that comes around. Just philosophically, that's not who I am. It's not how I've led. And having done my own thorough review of EL and IM and certainly GLEAM, we are likely to see a district that really sticks with those two curricula and the framework for a very long time. Are there going to be opportunities where we are going to find supplemental materials based on new and credible research? Yes. But in terms of the curriculum framework and certainly curriculum and certainly in terms of this framework, GLEAM is where we are investing our time. Let me also offer publicly one last thing, Madam Chair, and that is I don't want us to have a practice where we are essentially married to any consultant or partner, right? There is a time limit on such an investment, right? I believe that we have more than enough qualified individuals in the district who will eventually be able to turnkey some of the practices in years to come. And so for now, I believe that it would behoove us, though, to make sure that we have this investment upfront.
Great, thank you. And I just have one final question, just because of our budget constraints. Are we spending all categorical funds, so the professional development? Are we spending any general fund dollars on this, or is this categorical and Title I?
There is an investment in some general funds, but mostly we are looking at accessing our federal funds. We are in the process right now of engaging in some very spirited conversations with the Department of Education around what that means for us, right? Again, because we, you know, find ourselves in this space of navigating "policy," policy in air quotes, with solid practices. So the funding sources right now are intended to be a significant amount coming from federal funds, if and when that changes. I am happy to come back to the Board with an update about the funding source for this investment.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Board members, let me make sure. Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved 6-nothing. Now we have our information-only items. First item is Board Time Use Evaluation, Q3. For those of you
For those of you interested, the board publicly monitors how it spends its time with the goal that a majority of the time is centered on discussing student outcomes, as was evidenced today, an example probably embodied in the monitoring report. The second item is I two, Polk County Conference Board Meeting Minutes from March 2024. So next, we have items of privilege. Who would like to begin or who would like to share?
I'm going to try and make it through this. It is with profound sadness that I address to all of you today as we mourn the passing of a cherished member of our community, Terry Caldwell Johnson. Terry was not only a dedicated advocate for education, but also a friend, mentor, confidant to many of us. As we gather here, our hearts are heavy with grief, yet also filled with gratitude for the remarkable legacy Terry leaves behind. Her unwavering... Clearly, I can't. Commitment to the students of Des Moines, her passion for equity and inclusivity. Thank you. And her tireless efforts to effect positive change have left an indelible mark on our community. Terry's leadership, wisdom, and compassion were evident in every aspect of her work, from her insightful inquiries about data to her advocacy for marginalized communities, including black males in our district. She led with integrity, courage, and grace, even in the face of her own battle with cancer. Beyond her professional contributions, Terry touched the lives of many as a friend, mentor, and confidant. Her kindness, oh gosh, empathy, and unwavering support made a difference in countless lives, and her memory will continue to inspire us all. As we honor Terry's memory and legacy, let us all so recommit ourselves to the values she held dear. Let us strive to continue her work to champion equity and inclusivity and to ensure that every student in our district has the opportunity to thrive. To Terry's family and loved ones, I offer my deepest condolences and heartfelt sympathy. Know that Terry's legacy will live on in the hearts and minds of all who had the privilege of knowing her. That was my hat, now my committee chair hat to fill the district fore vacancy. I understand that filling the vacant position in a timely manner to ensure the continued effectiveness of the board. However, I trust that you all will agree that is essential for us to take the time to honor the memory of Terry. I've discussed with the committees and would like to propose that we postpone the next steps of the selection process. This will allow us to approach the task with the clarity and focus it deserves while also demonstrating our respect for the legacy of our departed colleague.
Ms. Martorano, is this a discussion item? Are you seeking feedback from board members at this time? Or is this a recommendation you want to put forth and we can get feedback from individual board members afterwards?
I don't want to, this is not an item on the agenda, so I certainly don't want to violate.
I think the general discussion, yeah, is just to understand people's scheduling constraints and assuming that is possible for us to navigate through. So, board members, if you could let Ms. Martorano know what schedule or scheduling constraints you might have next week as soon as possible, ideally tonight before you leave, that would be great.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to bring this up. Last week, I think it was last week or the week before, I can't remember. I, along with a couple of our board members, went to Perkins Elementary School for a library...
Ribbon cutting?
Ribbon cutting, renaming of their library of Harriet Curley. And I just want to take or give thanks to Perkins Elementary School, Dewana, and everybody from the NAACP that organized it. I felt really welcomed. It was a really beautiful event, and I just wanted to give thanks to that. And then also DMPS High School. They're going to have a, the high schools are going to have an art exhibit at Polk County, April first to the 26th. So I just wanted to let everybody know about that. My little seventh grader is so excited because I let him know that we're going to go to our exhibit, and he was excited because he loves, he loves art. Did I say seventh grader? I think, my seven-year-old, not my seventh grader. My seven-year-old, he thinks he's a seventh grader. My seven-year-old is really into art, so he's excited to go to this exhibit.
Thank you, Ms. Campos. Other board comments?
Thank you, Kim, for your beautiful comments. Thank you so much. I wanted to also lift up something else that's on the horizon, which is the Polar Bear Gala. It will be on Saturday, April 13th. There is still time to purchase your tickets. It's downtown at the Marriott. Our staff works so hard on this event, and the dollars really go to all the extracurriculars and making them available for the students at North. So, and obviously so much to celebrate there, including but not limited to Team Frostbite. So please, mark your calendar, Saturday, April 13th. Attend, if you can't attend, please consider donating and helping out to make sure we have another great year at the Polar Bear Gala.
Dr. Roberts, before I turn it over to you for the superintendent's report, I will let everybody know that as soon as we have information with regards to the recognition for Terry Caldwell Johnson, we will make sure that it's available, because I know a lot of people have expressed interest in wanting to make sure that they show their respects to Terry. Dr. Roberts, do you have a report you would like to submit at this point?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brief remarks. There's a proverb that says that when elephants fight, the grass gets trampled upon. Essentially, it's a metaphorical look at what happens when people who are in conflict can unintentionally harm bystanders, particularly those who are not as powerful as those who are in conflict. I've been a public school teacher and leader for about 24 years. I understand the transformative power of the American pre-K-12 public school system. I've seen its highs and lows, and I've been in spaces that many who are in positions of policy haven't dared to go. I've attended more funerals of young people than most, more prison visits than most. I've attended more graduation ceremonies than most. And so when I stand in this role that has been bestowed upon me to serve in partnership with the board and educators who have made a commitment to provide 100% of the students who knock on our doors with a quality education that will essentially change their lives, I expect that there is this inevitability of conflict. My approach to this work of leadership, attaining the vision that we've set and to making sure that we change the trajectory of all of our students, will not necessarily always align with many stakeholders. What I want to reassure everyone who has decided to partner with Des Moines Public Schools, if you've done so for the last several decades, you're currently doing so or you plan to do so, know that I would always lead from a place around decision-making that is best going to meet the needs of students, serve and support teachers, and certainly uplift and elevate leaders. I have never and will never ever politicize my approach to leadership. It doesn't have to align with many who are in positions of policy. But I want to make sure that there is no doubt that my commitment to being a relentless and ferocious advocate of public schools falls in the ears of those who will listen. And I also want to share that with the utmost humility that I am not someone who typically shows up in a place where I will turn the other cheek if children will get hurt. I am enthusiastic about and excited to continue to partner with every single stakeholder whose presence, philosophy, and commitment touches the students of Des Moines Public Schools and this amazing community that I've called home. But my humble request is that we work together in partnership. My humble request is that we continue to put students first in every way, shape, and form. And finally, I will say that no attacks on anyone who is intending to do the right thing will serve us well. When elephants fight, the grass gets trampled upon. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you for joining us this evening. We greatly appreciate all of you being here. The meeting is adjourned at, I can never see the clock. Thank you, 7:32. We're going to take a brief break and move into our work session. We are going to only have two work sessions. The first is the FY 25 budget, and then we are not doing goals and guardrails this evening. We will then move into a closed personnel session. So, board members, a five-minute break, and then we will reconvene for budget. Thank you.
I think just to frame this a bit, this is our third budget session. I anticipate there will be a fourth budget session. I have shared with all of you the list of questions that were submitted to Dr. Roberts and Shashank. They were not expected to answer those for today, so just to set expectations appropriately. And I think that's all I want to say on budget. I think it would be helpful, Shashank, in your comments to talk about anything that has been coming up at the public budget sessions as well.
Sure. Thank you, Jackie. So what we plan to cover is largely a balanced budget and the 24 legislative sessions. And as you had mentioned, the questions from the board will be addressed in the next meeting. So timelines, recap, board session today, we'll publish it on 5th April. The community discussions started. The first meeting that we had, community meeting, was yesterday at North. The interesting thing is Caitlin Clark's game was on, so we had two people who showed up.
Thank you for being so humility that you understood that some people might want to see Caitlin Clark.
But we did our presentation, and they asked some good questions. The April 16th meeting, which is the last meeting, which Jackie was alluding to, is when we will adopt the budget, certify the budget, have all the questions which the board and the community had asked responded to them. So we have another meeting tomorrow morning, bright and early, at East, and this is the schedule for the rest of them. This is the first time we'll be doing it in two different languages, Swahili in Hoover and in Spanish at Central Campus. So balanced budget. This is a slide which I presented before, so I'm not going to delve on this. So where has been the property tax rate for the last three years? As we can see, the property tax rate for Des Moines residents have been declining. When I came to the board before the SSA was approved, I had come with a 4% assumption, and that gave us a property tax rate of 14.70. With 2.5% SSA, it's going to be 14.68. So .02 cents lower than what it was at 4%. Not a huge difference, but it's beneficial to the district. When we had this public hearing last time, we had called...there were around five or six persons who showed up for public hearing. I called all of them. I typically don't have an opportunity to call back, so my experience was interesting. One person whom I called, "Who are you?" I said, "I'm Shashank Kurov, calling from Des Moines Public School," and she hung up. So I called up again, left a voicemail. I had one other person who actually called me up later. Just yesterday, I called that person up. Another person I called up, and he says...it was a lot of background noise. He was driving a truck. So he says, "I'll call you back later." The third person I called up, left a voicemail, did not call back. So unfortunately, I could not have a meaningful discussion with any one of them. So what are the identified reductions, and how are we bringing it down to zero? I think the board has seen that we are reducing 10 FTEs in high schools, which is purely based on lower enrollment. And there was 4% FTE across the department, which is $2 million. We had worked on a health insurance plan, which was pharmacy-driven. So what we had done was we went and did an RFP around eight months back to engage a consultant who, on behalf of the district, did an RFP with different pharmacy benefit managers, PBMs, and they were the likes of Wellmark and CBS and there were four others, six of them, all national-level PBMs. The health insurance cost for the district is approximately $18 million. As part of the negotiations, we were able to sign a contract which will reduce the health cost by $1.5 million, the pharmacy-related costs, with no impact to any covered member. They would still get the same drugs they got before this thing. So for a covered member, they will not realize anything has changed at all. And as a district, we'll save $1.5 million. To the best of my knowledge, I don't think so, any school district has done this in the state of Iowa to reduce pharmacy costs. And this equates to almost 20 FTEs. Interest income, we have been fortunate, to some extent, that the interest rates are high, and we have employed our investment policy to the best that we could. We had the cash available, so this is going to add an additional $3 million in interest income. The SSA portion, as the board knows, when we make a budget projection, our first estimates, we take 2% as SSA. And the SSA that was approved was 2.5%. So that 0.5% increased SSA is going to give us $1.25 million. The last item is something that we have not done in the past, and this is using our spending authority reserve, which is...we, over a period of time, have generated a reserve in our spending authority, and we are leveraging that reserve to reduce the budget deficit. I'm pausing over here before I move to the next slide. If board has any question.
What does that reduce our fund balance to? Does that cash out our fund balance?
No, it does not. So the objective, or one of the board's goals that was laid out well before all our time, maybe Kim was probably there, I'm not too sure, was our spending authority should be 15% or thereabouts. Our spending authority is a little bit higher than 15% right now, so we are leveraging that amount. It still will not dip our spending authority below 15%. So we are still maintaining the board's objective and goals and not hurting that.
I know we've talked about this several times, and I did not understand that we actually could spend that money if we didn't have enrollment connected to it. And so I just...can you just make sure, in the most simple terms possible, to talk through how...I mean, I know we're at...I mean, I read the report. We're at 25% to 30%, and so we have more than enough to be at that safe ratio of 15%. But we've been there before, and is the reason we haven't done it as a board because we had that guardrail around set for target by the board?
No. So I will try to explain the best I can.
Sure.
And please ask me as many questions, because, Jackie, this is a little complicated concept. So I've got it down to the slide, which I would want the board to look at. When we say budget must be balanced, that is the revenue that we will get in the current year plus fund balance, which is basically the surplus from previous years being added to the revenue of this year. How is this fund balance generated? Revenue, less expenses, any balance remaining is what is the carryforward fund balance from previous years. Those two things added together should be in excess of the annual expenditure for the year. So that was one. The 20-25% that you're alluding to is solvency ratio. Our spending authority is not that high. It is somewhere closer to 16% to 17%. Taking this amount, so 1% of spending authority, approximately equates to around $6, $6.5 million. So if we take down $5.25 million, we are still above the 15% threshold. Is this a practice that we should do every year in case we are unable to achieve our target? I would not suggest that. But can we do it once in a while to do it, especially in a year where we are challenged and we are unable to hit the target? I think we can. And again, I would not say that we are the only district who has done that. There are districts who have done it in the past.
This will give us less wiggle room in future.
It does impact us, Kim, to your point. Yes, it does. But if we were not at 15% or above 15%, I would not have used the fund balance at all. It's because the board goal is at 15%, and we are higher than 15%. Now, if we continue using it and it starts coming down to 15%, then at least I would not support it. If the board says, "Go and do it," that's different, but I would not support it if it's below 15%.
I think as we go through the conversation, I'd be curious to understand...I think we're going to continue to have a lot of budget challenges. I'm sure you do, too. And the last thing I would hope we're not doing is kicking the can to the next year and the next year. And so we haven't made the tough decisions yet that I think we need to make. And so I'd just be really curious to understand and just think through that a little bit. Were there things that were on the cut list and obviously not teaching positions? But I just want to make sure that we are...I think every year is going to get worse. And if with reimagining education, there's a need for additional expenditures, and I know that's more capital money, but it feels like we're plugging a hole. And that may be the recommendation of the board. I think I just personally am struggling a little bit with this. So it'll be helpful to understand what are the tough choices that are still being made as opposed to just plugging it with the fund balance.
May I?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for those reactions. I certainly do want to offer, and Shashank, if you can go back to the slide with identified reductions, because I certainly have heard the board charge, both Shashank and I, loud and clear, about making those tough decisions. And I believe that we have, not only have we made tough decisions around ensuring cuts, but I think the team has sort of coalesced around stretching our innovative muscles around how to get to this place, right, of moving steadily towards reducing our deficit. So case in point, the work that Shashank and team did to make adjustments to our benefits and doing so in a manner with $1.5 million where it does not impact our teammates, I think that speaks to our commitment to innovation. The 4% FTE across select departments, which landed us at $2 million, I think that, again, this is certainly not an attempt to be applauded, but it shows that we have the proclivity to make those tough decisions as we recognize our budget and financial position. Certainly, I want to commend our business and finance team just for getting us to this place where they have, in a prudent way, looked at investing in the district's resources to land on that interest income of $3 million, right? So those are places where I want us to certainly acknowledge that we are pushing the envelope, so to speak. The fund balance, though, Madam Chair, certainly, if the board has an appetite to hear a little bit more of a less technical discussion from Shashank that gives us a better sense of what this means for us, right? And I am 100% aligned with you, Madam Chair. We should not kick the financial can down the road when it comes to sort of addressing the deficit. So this is a really healthy conversation for us to have.
Just a question, Shashank. I may not be connecting two things correctly here, but the interest income, is that...would that be affected in next year, for instance, because of the fund balance? I mean, even if interest rates stay high, we've got two inputs there now that we will not be able to plug, and so it hits two areas, and so that's, you know...and they're talking about rate cuts by the end And so it hits two areas and, and so that's, you know, and, and they're talking about rate cuts by the end of the year. So all of that could impact two places instead of one now that that fund balance is lower.
And Patrick, to your point, I was earlier on hesitating this for exactly that reason because this is a benefit which could be good for the district for a shorter period versus a perpetual period. Like the pharmacy thing that I am bringing out is in perpetuity. But something like interest income, as long as the interest rates remain high, we definitely are taking advantage. But at some point in time, they will no longer continue where they are today. Going on to the legislative sessions. Sorry, I should ask any other questions before I move forward, sorry.
Can you just recap the history of utilization of the fund balance? So, you know, over the past 10 years, maybe just put it in some perspective of how many times have we actually used fund balance?
I can, what I can do is next, on April 16th, I will bring a chart as to why Dr. Roberts' predecessor and my predecessor decided to even bring this thing to the board of having that 15% target for spending authority and 20%. But to speak at a higher level, Jackie, the district was on the negative trend line. And our spending authority was as low as 1 to 2%. And if it had become negative, we would have been in a position that Dr. Roberts and myself would have had to go to the state to present a plan to say, what is it that we will do to bring it in the positive territory? The state would have given us some time, but if you were unable to do it, they would actually appoint their own persons to make decisions for the school districts. And both of us fully realize that that is not a situation that we want to be, and so does the board. So we have, to the best of my knowledge, never ever used because we never really had enough fund balance to leverage. Some of the things that we have done, whether it is the budget cuts that we have been doing for the last at least four to five years, ESAR, where we have been able to spend certain things which otherwise would have come out from our general fund, has helped us build this healthy fund balance. But ESAR is also going away. By June 2024, we will no longer have the CARES Act slash ESAR funds available. So we have to be prudent going forward that utilization of the fund balance could happen once in a while, but that should not be a situation that we are depending on going forward. So to your point, we have never used the fund balance before because we never really had it except in the last three, four years that we managed to really make that take. And, and I will bring, I think, I think we should have at least last seven to 10 years data. And that chart, it's a line graph that we have that will very clearly show why this is important.
And my only other question is, in light of what I think is a not insignificant amount of thinking around next year, the district, reimagining education, not all of those are capital expenditures likely. And so how, where are we going to have the financial flexibility to make the changes that are being recommended?
So you're talking from an operating standpoint, not from the capital standpoint?
Well, I think, I mean, my sense is it's a little of both, right? I mean, there's capital, there's building, but there's more than building, right? There's lots of work and expenditures that are going to go into these changes. And so do we run the risk of not having the money to do that?
Sure.
If we're spending this money this year? Because we may not be at the point where we're above 15% and not have fund balance to spend on trying to accomplish some of those things. So I'm trying to just look a little bit longer term to understand. Maybe it's not that total number. So I, I think I'm trying to be as cautious as possible if I'm to understand the changes that are being proposed for next year.
Thank you, Madam Chair, very, very helpful as well. So Shashank, what I'm hearing is there is an opportunity for us to come back to the board on the 16th with additional detail that presents, I would say, what I'm envisioning right now, two to three different scenarios as to why this is the most prudent decision right now, even as we're considering those major initiatives such as reimagining education, which will have a much longer term impact. And then to provide that sort of trend data that Madam Chair is referencing in terms of, you've answered a question around have we ever used the fund balance? But I think I want to make sure that we are aligned with the board around not putting ourselves in a position where we are looking at a short-term fix. I know when you and I have spoken, that's not what we envisioned. But I think there's still an opportunity for us to provide the same level of enlightenment to the board.
Yeah, and I'm just one voice. So I really want to ask other board members to speak up on this. I just, that's just one perspective.
Well, I think, I was just thinking of Teri's voice, and I had actually saying, what's the, what is the loss? Like, what is the, what, what is the opportunity loss on this path? And I think maybe just helping us to understand what opportunity loss would come with us using money in a sort of unprecedented way for, for those of us that have been at least recently at this table. So I think there's that. And I think maybe for me also is maybe this is a one-time use because there is a bigger plan for reimagining education and, and thinking in that way. But maybe just helping to give us a little assurance that why, why this is okay right now because we're not going to come back and do this again because we have a plan down the road. Just, just a little assurance in that way.
Sure.
I mean, that is, I get it, sort of savings account is there for, right? To help out in different times, just making sure, exactly.
So in the legis, sorry, any further questions before I move to this? Okay, so from the, from the changes in the legislature that is going to impact us directly are largely three things, which is the AAs, the teacher minimum salary and supplemental state aid. And I've tried to cover all three of them. So the, so the big changes that are coming in is broadly divided between FY25 and FY26. And FY25, what they're saying is in special education, there is no change. In FY26, 90% of the funding will go to AIA. 10% of the funding related to special education will come to us, but it is to be used for special education. So total dollar pool for special education is not changing. Media and education service is a little different. Where they are saying that in FY25, 60% of the funding will go to the district and 40% to the AIA. We can still contract and get the same services from AIA. And FY26, 100% of the amount will come to the districts. So we have discussed in our executive cabinet and we will be evaluating whether that 60-40 split that we have, that 60%, that funding that is coming directly to the districts, A, do we still want to leverage AIA? Or do we want to do something in-house or leverage a third party? Now, having said that, the flexibility which this change has provided to the districts is in case we don't use that 60% in FY25 or 100%, that's a total saving in our general fund dollars. So far, that was not the case because it was a flow-through. We used to get it and we used to give it to AIA. Now, if tomorrow we say we don't use that 60% in year one and 100% in year two, that is a saving. And to give an idea, that 60% in year one is approximately around $2.7 million, which is $1.3 million for media services and $1.4 for educational services. So that is $2.7 million. So that is a discussion which we need to have to decide. Do we want to leverage AIA, change of game plan, or bring it as a general, general fund savings? Do you have a question, Jackie?
I just have an editorial comment that I'll keep to myself. No, no. Just a question on special education though. So our model is different, obviously. And so for FY26, how will our funding look different, if at all? For, just for special edu, for special education?
So it should not look much different. I don't see much of a change. Dr. Roberts, do you see anything at all?
Not much of a change. But in FY26, I think we will be in a position where we'll have to decide if, what model do we want to pursue around these changes?
What percent of AEA services for special education are we using? I would, we use primarily all in-house services.
100%, we don't use any AEA services, especially at all. We are self-sufficient.
So really that, regardless of what choices are made in that aspect, won't impact us?
Will impact us, no.
The other big impact was on the teacher salaries. So the change is that in FY25, $47,500 will be the minimum salary in year one. The same thing for FY26 will become $50,000. We have a subset of teachers in year one who are below $47,500. So based on where we land as far as our negotiation, there would be a certain amount that we'll be receiving from the state to bridge that gap. There is no additional funding that we have seen which is going to come between year one and year 12. It's only for year one or for year 12. And year 12 also is with 12 years experience. So it's actually a teacher who is year 13 because it is with 12 years experience. But in between, if there is any gap, we are not getting funding. Based on what we are seeing, we should be fine. We should not have a shortfall because by the time a teacher is in year 13, the salary would be 60 or 62,000 starting from year one to year 12. But for year one, there is a shortfall. It is a very convoluted way of calculating how the money will be coming to us. They have divided all the school districts in 10 groups. We fall in group 10, which is all schools with an enrollment larger than 3,500.
3,500?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so, so that's an interesting thing, Patrick. 70% of the school districts nationally have less than 2,500 students. So the way they will calculate for us is they will, since we are in that tier of schools, they're going to see what is the shortfall for all those different schools and come at an average amount that will be given to all the school districts. I think the intent for that is that schools which are already paying above the minimum should also get some amount. But in case we are short and we are still not able to hit 47.5, the Department of Management would do an additional calculation to make us whole. So we will not be out of pocket, but it's a little roundabout way, basically to help the schools which would, which are already paying in excess of 47.5.
So this, just to clarify, this is over, the expectation is that every school district by FY26 is at 50K.
Correct.
We don't get any additional funds. So it's a two-year investment to make us whole if we need to be made whole for new teachers.
Correct, correct.
And then for year 12, what, where are we on the pay scale in comparison to 60?
We are higher than 60. I don't know the exact amount, but we are higher than 60.
Got it, thank you.
Absolutely.
I don't mean to put too fine a point on this, but I think I'm going to try. Just for those of you who are watching at home, so all of the news about teachers getting a big pay raise, the largest school district and the biggest portion of teachers really did not benefit from this? Am I hearing that right?
At least in year one.
Okay.
At least in year one. I think next year it will be a bigger difference because the amount is $50,000.
Just want people to understand that, that it's not, if they have in their mind that everybody's getting a big raise, then.
That's not the case. That is accurate. The other change which is coming in is for the paraeducators. They are saying $15 minimum per hour would be paid. All or most DMPS paras and associates already meet the minimum. There's some part-time metro workers which don't. But we will do the math, we'll see what exactly it is, and then we'll find out how much we are getting from the state.
Just to be clear, I think, so Susie had sent up that pay schedule for this year. And then the $1.25 makes a majority of these people, these individuals, over 15? Or they're currently over 15?
Go ahead.
So for, are you talking about the DMPS paras and associates? Yeah, so the $1.25 is only going to the food service employees.
Okay.
Only. That's, you know, in it, over what other AFSMI employees received. For the paraeducator and the associates, currently, they don't meet the minimum, but they will next year. However, we're still going into negotiations with our ESP contract yet, so that isn't completely finalized. And then metro, our part-time employees are under the $15 an hour, but I don't know that that's included in this 15-hour minimum for paraeducator salary, if that makes sense.
Susie, the distinction being made around the increase for our food nutrition staff, does that have anything for the benefit of the board and the community, anything to do with the enterprise fund?
Yes. We were able to do that because it's enterprise fund, funds.
So are we getting money from the state to, are they subsidizing for us to meet the minimum?
Yes, if there is a minimum, and that is why, if you've seen that, it says state has allocated $14 million. This is at the state level. So if any district has a shortfall, including DMPS, we would be made whole by the state.
For one year?
For one year only, that is correct. And thereafter, we'll have to account for that cost from our general fund, yeah. And food and nutrition is an enterprise. It had built up a balance. It cannot get into negative. General fund cannot subsidize food and nutrition, but it had a positive balance, so we could leverage that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. The last item was the supplemental state aid. This is a chart which everyone has seen. The average for last 10 years is 2.04 and this year is 2.50. So. And the next hearing for, for budget is on 16th, yeah. Any questions in general?
Maybe we could take a few minutes to talk about where we are with goals and guardrails and just how we're navigating timeline. So we're not doing goals and guardrails tonight. I think Dr. Roberts and Maria, we are going to meet tomorrow to figure out if we wanted to do the interims. We, I think maybe the broader conversation is we don't have goals and guardrails done. And we also have to approve a budget on a timeline. And so how are we thinking about that? And I know we had talked about potentially an addendum or having another conversation, but I just, I think for the sake of all board members to want to get on the same page around how we want to handle it.
So I think what we had discussed in the last board meeting is we will come back to the board with the costing for the goals in the second board meeting, which is going to be, I think, May 21st.
Oh, the second May meeting?
The second May meeting, yeah. I think it's May 21st, yeah. So as far as the budget approval goes, two things which are critical for the budget approval. One is the property tax rate. approval, one is the property tax rate, and the second is the budget must be balanced. As far as goals and guardrails goes, in case there's an additional cost, I, my feeling is a lot of it will be reprioritizing the existing dollars from one bucket to the other bucket. There would be some additional cost. Hopefully, it should not be too large, but in case it is there, we have a situation of amending our budget. So in fact, I would be coming to the Board to amend the FY24 budget sometime between this month and next month.
25?
So we can always include that additional cost in case it is there.
Do Board members have questions on that?
I just think that there are a lot of unknowns right now, and, you know, just tonight, we approved a really large expenditure that is completely aligned with meeting our goals while honoring our guardrails. And I, I certainly don't want to hit pause on any of that, because we have existing goals and existing guardrails to honor. So I think as a Board, just being cognizant of the fact that if it truly is just a shift from, you know, from the math goal to the pre-existing math goal to a college career post-secondary readiness goal, we, when we are monitoring, when we are evaluating, when we are, are doing those check-ins, we need to understand and appreciate that we also are, are not giving the full opportunity to properly fund these in year, year one or year zero for some of these.
If we have the opportunity to amend the budget, is that a one-time amendment? Or do we have the ability to, do you have the ability to come back to us if we find ourselves in year zero needing to make an adjustment? Can we do that?
So typically, we have time till end of May to make amendment for the budget. Historically, we keep track of that and go only, come only once to the Board for that approval. But when we discuss it in May of 2024, and we decide we need to add additional dollars in FY25 budget, we can come to the Board till May of 2025 to make amendments. So you have almost the full year to make those amendments.
And we're not limited by number of amendments? If we wanted to make 50 amendments, we could, that's kind of ridiculous, but.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Ms. Mariano, just want to make sure I understand, so if we were to settle on the goals, the guardrails, the interims, the understanding of the investment in May, that body of work wouldn't take effect until June or July? I don't know if it's June, or when, when the goals and guardrails. So I just want to make sure I understand, I think the point that you're making is, we got to fully fund a goal or guardrail if we expect success?
Yes, and I, I, even if we approve this, you know, approve goals and guardrails in a month and make necessary budget, whether we have an amendment, whatnot, the reality is, is if we are going to be changing inputs, changing strategies, changing resources, our, the superintendent and team need to, I, I want them to be having very thoughtful conversation and consideration around what that looks like. Summer PD is already planned, right? Summer, you know, PD is probably already planned for next school year, if it's anything like it used to function. So I just want us to, to recognize that us making, even if we do push along or push for, for changes to happen now, we have to, we have to be, we have to understand that the change is not going to be implemented, the inputs are not going to be implemented, the PD is not going to be implemented, the wraparound services for our teachers, staff will not be fully implemented in two months or by August.
I mean, I, I'm not disagreeing, I'd probably want to hear that from Superintendent Roberts to make sure that there's agreement there, because that, I thought we were all moving towards the trajectory of goal implementation and approval by Dr. Roberts and the staff for this fiscal year. So I just, I hear, I hear you, and I, your point is right.
Yeah, and I, I was definitely, I, I agree. I think that we were on a time, a different timeline than where we're at right now. And so yes, please, Dr. Roberts.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mariano. So yeah, it's, it's one of the reasons why, and I know that we are delaying tonight's goal approval, because again, I believe our consultant is not here, but the reason that the team and I worked diligently towards having our goals and interim goals ready for review and approval tonight is because our timeline crunch is becoming concerning. But it's not to the point whereby it's going to significantly impact some of what we already have in place, such as planning and preparation for summer professional development, right? Teaching and learning team on orders, we are focused on that, getting those in place, because we are currently working, sort of, or anchoring our work, I should say, in our school year 23, 24 goals and guardrails. We are not going to implement, at least with any sort of intentional action, goals and guardrails that will be approved for school year 24, 25 until after day one of school year 24, 25.
Can you say that again?
Yep. So up until the very last day of this school year, we are going to anchor 100% of our decisions in the existing goals and guardrails and interim goals and guardrails. The soon-to-be-approved goals and guardrails for school year 24, 25 will not take effect or will not have our focus until after the first day of the school year 24, 25. Is that helpful?
So to Kim's point, summer professional development this year will be about the old goals and guardrails, or will it be forward-facing toward the new?
Thank you. Excellent question. It's going to be forward-facing, because again, while we are still awaiting the approval, our team certainly understand the importance of time, and we are working behind the scenes to make sure that, that, that delay doesn't handicap our preparation, right, for us to move diligently towards, Jen, goal and guardrail achievement or attainment.
Yeah. And I think just for future conversations, when you are making recommendations of various different strategy, resource input adjustments, just so that we as a Board are cognizant of when, when that request comes to us, when it's, when we say yes, and when we're approving it, knowing and understanding that as we're monitoring, that there's going to be adjustments made, and to recognizing that during our, not only monitoring conversations, but our evaluation conversations.
Kim, because our consultants are not on with us tonight, can you shed some light on what best practice is in this area with our governance? Because I can't imagine that all school districts set goals and leave them. There has to be a best practice around shifting, given the fact that there will be this transition from the time the captain says, turn the boat, until somebody in the boiler room actually turns the rudder. You know, I mean, like, there's a, there's a delay there that we have to expect. So what's best practice?
The, I mean, ideal state is, is, we would back map from, from when it is that we needed to make budgetary decisions for any possible changes. And I think that we as a Board did that. However, it was a very, it's been a very tight timeline. So best practice recommendation is that you don't evaluate the superintendent on success of meeting goals while honoring guardrails unless there has been full budget and allocation of resources. And so, you know, if, if you as a superintendent are telling us, we are, we are allocating based on where we're at right now, and, and we are okay moving forward with that, then, you know, I, we're so close, I, I don't want to certainly harbor on the, us not being exactly where we want to be by the date that we want to be there, but I just, I, I think it's important for us to recognize that if we don't make it, it's okay, but we need to be thoughtful of that.
I, I'd like to suggest that we, I think we recently found out that we weren't going to be able to have a conversation tonight, and so on goals and guardrails, I think we are freeing up sometime this week and potentially adding time next week, and I'm just wondering if we want to think about any way to have a goals conversation with our consultant, even if virtually, to review interims later this week. It's just a suggestion for people to consider.
I'm honestly for it. I don't really want to delay anything a little bit more. I think we are on a good push to it, and I, I don't want to delay it any further. I don't want to stop. I mean, we, let's get it go, go through and virtually, if we could do it virtually.
So bear with us, we'll sync up tomorrow at 10, 10:00 or 10:30, and see if we can come to a quick resolution on that. Great conversation. Other questions for Shashank as it relates to budget?
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Thanks for finding the cost savings. Thanks to the staff that are here too, that are helpful as well. Okay, team, we are going to move into a closed session. Ladies and gentlemen, gentlemen, when I say five minutes, I actually, will actually abide by five minutes and go to the bathroom real quick. But we're going to come back into a closed session, and five minutes.